All right, here we go. Jump in the gun.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the co-star of Division Newspaper for the Borough of Delmar and Esbury Park Press on August 1st, 2016, and notice of this meeting was posted on multiple boards in this building.
Can we all stand? Very good. For the pledges, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the people of our republic, to the citizens of our nation, and to your honor, individual, and liberty. Can we remain standing, just a moment of silence for our troops and their families? Thank you. Are you ready to go?
Ready.
Anything else to...
Right into public session.
Right into the public session. On resolutions only on the agenda, we will continue to have a public session at the end of the meeting. Do I have a...
Actually, can you just...
Jessica?
Invite anybody out who wants to speak in the public session.
Anybody in the public want to come up and talk about the resolutions that are on the agenda for today? Tom? Did you finish your walk already, or are you going after this?
What is the RFP? What is that? I don't know what it is. RFP.
It's...
It's in the heading here.
It stands for Request for Proposal.
It's just an acronym.
Request for proposal. All right. And it says proposal must be able to demonstrate that they are capable of completing the project. So obviously, this was not able to demonstrate this. Was that the whole thing, or were there just some specific areas that they weren't able to, you know, show that they could complete the project? And if they were just... Could you name what they are?
Thank you, Tom. Colleen, probably smarter to go to break to Carl, let him explain. We have our attorney that handles our...
Special counsel.
Special counsel. And he can better answer this, Tom, than I can.
Who's that?
Carl, can you remember him? He used to be the Borough Attorney.
I have the floor. Go ahead. Morning, Tom. So the answer to your question is the Delmar has to undergo a reevaluation and it needs to be in place for the 2017 calendar year.
We stay ahead.
Right. So the companies that submitted the responses to the RFP needed to make sure that they could do it within that timeframe. One of the people who submitted the response said they could not do it within that timeframe, so therefore they were disallowed.
Do you know of other reasons than that, just that?
Correct. As far as I understand, that's my understanding, that was the only defect in the proposal.
Well, that's a decent information. You can't do a job.
That's all I wanted. I'm happy with your work, sir.
And Carl, who's giving us the deadline that it has, in other words, the company that bid on it can't do it in the timeframe? So who made up the timeframe?
There was a consent order with the important Deputy Attorney General regarding revaluations ordered a little while ago. So there were deadlines in that court order that you have to comply with, and that's why we need that today to be able to effectuate this timeframe.
So all municipalities have to have a reevaluation and...
Every so often, the county and the Director of Division of Taxation review the assessed values and there's all sorts of analysis of those deviation coefficients, et cetera, fancy percentage type language. When the assessments are out of line and the order of reevaluation, you have to... I think right now there are four to five municipalities in Monmouth County currently undergoing a revaluation process. There's a few who have done it a couple of years ago, and my understanding is a couple more that need to order in the next year or so.
Is it like the master plan that has to be done every 10 years?
No, there's no specific date. For example, every five years you must do one. It's when the assessed values are out of whack, as a legal term, with the sales prices. It shows that the assessed values are not keeping in line with the market. So when those deviations get to a certain point, then they're ordered municipality by municipality.
I hate to keep bringing up the storm, but did the storm have any effect on us having to go to the reevaluation because our property values have changed since the storm?
That was an issue that we had a concern about, and we had raised that to the county and the Director of Division of Taxation. So they gave us some additional time, which is coming up now, to do the reevaluation to hopefully let the market stabilize after Sandy. We negotiate as much time as we can get to allow that to happen in fairness to the folks of Delmar.
If a resident was part of the last assessment, are they excluded?
No, every property in the town gets inspected and a new assessment put on it. The property owners, there will be people coming around to do inspections of the home and businesses, every property in town. They will receive a notice in the mail of the proposed reassessment. In that notice, there will be a date and time which would be in this building right here to come and meet with the municipal assessor, as well as the company that revalues any questions where they're not happy with the assessed value that's placed on the property, and to try and resolve these issues before the assessments become final, which means they will become final and in place for the 2017 calendar year. During this meeting, some things happen. Sometimes people are away, and they come to see the house, they're not home. So they'll say, hey, come out and take a look at it, or they thought that, you know, the shed that was tampered with one year, or somebody thought the shed that was attached to the side of the house was livable space and it was a shed for lawn overs and things. So they agreed to change that value because it was an oversight. So if anyone does have an issue with the assessment, you know, feel free to come to the meetings. It'll be on the card and get in the mail to try and address those problems.
It's random, right? Because like we were assessed with other people. It seems very random.
Oh, well, there's actually maybe... This might explain. There's two assessment type programs going on right now in Monmouth County. So what we're here to act on this evening, this morning rather, is the municipal wide reassessment that just described, where every property gets inspected, every property gets reassessed for 2017. There's another program which is called the Demonstration Assessment Program in Delmar, as well as the entire Monmouth County. Every gets valued in Monmouth County, it's been under four, I think we're going about four years now. That program requires, so hopefully we don't have to do full reevaluations, is a 20% of the properties in town are inspected every year, and then they're walked out to see if a reassessment is in order. And so it's 20% every year, so every five years everyone gets inspected. So some people here may have not been inspected yet, some people may have. So that's a separate program that the state is actually using Monmouth County as like a pilot program, and if it has good results, they're anticipating rolling that out statewide. I think another county has been brought into the program. I'm 100% sure that they have initially anticipated some counties doing the product further.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does the inspector, when they come, do they have to be able to get inside the house as well?
Yeah, they're required by law to make three attempts. They will have badges and information like that. If anyone has any questions, certainly all part of all, they're required to make three attempts to get inside the house. So if they're home, usually works to your benefit to have it come and inspect it, it'll be more accurate assessment of your property.
Is it kind of like when the insurance vector comes, they just take some pictures? It takes about five, 10 minutes?
Yeah, it doesn't take very long. They take pictures of the outside of the house, they'll take some exterior measurements to measure the building itself. They come in and take a look to see, you know, age of the house, you know, water heaters, major systems in the house. That factors in how they place evaluation of property. And usually doesn't take long. And this particular company, Delmar, in the past, and they have folks that they have in the field, usually very lit, very polite, they understand that you don't want to be inconvenienced, so they try to make it quick. They will ask a few questions if it's not clear, like, oh, is your stove gas or electric? You know, sometimes you can't tell from looking at it. Generally, it's rather quick, a few simple, obvious questions, and they're out there working. You're welcome.
And what if I hear residents who are saying, I'm not going to allow them to come into my house?
If they tell the folks, I don't want you in my house, please don't come back. They're supposed to make three tries. Usually, if people are rather upset that you can't come back, people just know that they refuse entry. So you certainly have the right not to allow them access. You know, obviously, just be polite and tell the folks, I understand you have to make three tries, please don't come back, I don't want you in my home, and they will, they understand.
Is there any effect to what happens, and can the person... If they don't allow the person in, can they come and object to their evaluation?
They certainly still can come to object to the evaluation, they don't allow access. The issue that becomes a problem is the people who assess it are not able to give a better understanding of the interior of the house, and things have to affect the assessment. So it kind of works against you if you don't like their assessment, they didn't allow them access. And then I've seen people in the past where they didn't allow access, they did their assessment, and the folks say, well, if we're able to get inside, we may be able to reduce it or make your assessment some fashion. Then the homeowner eventually says, okay, come over next Tuesday at 10:00, whatever works to do an inspection. So there's still a chance to resolve that, it's better to do it if the person's assessing possible.
Is this just residential, or is it going to be businesses also?
Residential businesses, every piece of property in the entirety of the Borough of Delmar. They do not even look at municipal properties.
They do.
Yep, they look at the railroad properties, everything within the boundaries of the Borough of Delmar. A little different when it's the Borough's property, but they still are required to review those properties and even though it's the exact property, it's an assessment category. So it's thoroughly into it.
How long will this take?
Well, we have to get the contracts signed and in place, they would start rather quickly. And off the top of my head, I think they need to get cards out to the homeowners in the early fall, I think it's an October date, that they have their meetings, you know, we're signaling, card, we'll get, there'll be time to meet sometime in November, and then everything's finalized and submitted to the state and put in place for 2017. So that's generally the timeframe.
Did that prompt any other questions from the audience? Just ask you, just state your name.
Linda Chelston, Street. Do I recall correctly that we withdrew for a demonstration project, this demonstration project, and decided we would do...
Some of the people can't hear you, be honest, can you talk into that microphone?
No, it's my phone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You got to get pretty close, because that microphone picked up your voice if you were too far away.
No, you weren't. Do I remember correctly that we withdrew from the, from Monmouth's demonstration program and chose to do our own internal Delmar inspection with contractor? Is that correct? Do you remember a meeting, I would say in the fall?
There was some companies that there was a concern over them.
Okay, we did do that.
Yes.
Now, we are... What would have been the difference to stay with the Monmouth demonstration project versus hiring our own contracts in terms of the cost of process?
There's no other option, is my understanding.
Okay, was Monmouth going to charge us for the process?
So what would the Borough have decided to do was initially, when that program started, there wasn't sufficient staff for the Borough to actually go out and do the inspections themselves, so they had hired a company to do that, that was still the Borough's option. My understanding is we no longer have that contract?
Correct, that was just to catch up on some of the...
So we're still part of that demonstration program? It's just whether the Borough uses a third party to do the inspection versus doing it themselves?
Okay, so it would have been set up essentially, that would have automatically been done under that program, and now it's choosing a new company and...
And this process would have gone forward regardless of the demonstration program?
Right.
Carl?
Correct.
Oh, there was no question. But was, if you do it through your own contractor, or you went with one county that was using the Borough correctly? I was just wondering what the difference financially would have been.
The county, the county does determine how to do the inspections, or use a third party? They just say you have to do them?
Right, okay.
You can do it without yourself. So the Borough had originally done a contract and decided to do it themselves.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tom, your hand was up first.
Thanks.
Glad to.
Ryan Tabitha Feldman. Oh, you're a good researcher, right? Yes, I can get your job tomorrow.
Oh, cool.
Hi, just a question regarding the 20% every year that you were talking about. Does that mean that there are homes in the town that will get assessed as part of that 20% as well as the entire town assessment that's being done?
That's correct. Seems a little bit odd, but yes, that's correct.
It's not the same company, so it's possible that you can have two different assessments for 2017.
No, no. There may be someone coming to do an inspection from the town perspective on the 20%, but there will be one assessment for 2017, even if you're in that odd vault of two inspections, one assessment which will be the reval companies' assessment going forward to 2017.
And so the one that's doing all of Delmar is the one that sticks?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great question. Tom?
Yeah, Tom Burkett, I have a question on, I think it's free property that we currently have under a pilot program for tax abatement, and I was wondering how they're going to be impacted, particularly in light of the fact that they're mixed use, and in some of the cases, there's condominiums above. Are they going to be assessed separately or together, whether it's a condominium or apartment or what have you?
Let me try to investigate a second, something about an appraisal. My understanding, the appraisal process is that the appraisers will value the property as appropriate. Some properties are valued, it's called a sales comparison, which usually in homes, you know, your home is three bedrooms, two and a half baths, one car garage, they can't find exact fit together when they have three bathrooms, so they can adjust from between the two. The other approach is called a sales analysis approach, basically what would sell, you know, a business, how would they value that property if they asked to buy it on the T- income stream? The property you're describing would probably be done in that fashion. They wouldn't necessarily say the commercial elements were taxed, the residential was flying, amount that they look at as a whole. So that's probably how they would assess that one. As to your question regarding a pilot payment, I'm not familiar with how the pilot is scheduled, but even with the pilot, a pilot program in place, they will get assessed, it will be assessed value on the tax records, and then however they may get a play with the pilot, we'd have to see the pilot itself. Some of them requiring to pay land taxes, and the improvements are under the pilot program, some of them they're all in one, and there's a pilot payment that encompasses, you know, property versus improvement. So that's, that's like the answer, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble.
I'm still unclear, in some cases, whether the people who have the condominiums are actually paying property taxes separate from the abatement pilot project or not. Do we have an answer to that?
Well, I think you're talking about two different things. I think you're talking about people who apply for the five-year abatement, that's after Sandy, and then those who might be in a pilot, in a property that has a pilot payment. Those are two different...
Let's say, they're piloting under the abatement program, right? Under the pilot program?
They have a pilot, so they have a financial agreement with the town.
Okay. The people who bought the condominiums, the mixed-use facility, the people who bought the condominiums, are they paying real estate taxes?
They are, they are paying taxes. If you have specific questions about specific properties, you might need to email those in, because it really does vary depending on the property. But I think what Mr. Kemp's trying to get to is this court mandated reval will touch every property in Delmar, regardless if there's a pilot, financial agreement for pilots, regardless if it's a public property that doesn't pay taxes. Everybody will get touched and everybody will get reassessed.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, I mean, it's a good question, I think it's a little confusing.
I'm still not clear on that.
Probably a bigger condominium over here in Evanston, Hampton pays more than, more money tax-wise than a smaller apartment.
I think it's, well, the reason I raise it is because, you know, we're currently expanding the redevelopment program and likely to have more situations like that come up, and I think it's important to be, you know, be clear on how we handle it in the future. You know, irrespective of how it is now, when we're stuck with that, I think it's, you know, I don't know that we're clear on that. I'm not complaining, I'm just curious.
It's the agreement of the property, the investors, and then you've got the individuals that live there.
Yeah.
Completely different.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
May I speak again?
Sure.
I just wanted to go on, like, Tom Delmar, I didn't say that before. One thing that's not fair to talk about here that I got a real problem with is I look at this as a governmental invasion of private privacy. Yes, we can say, no, we don't want the person to come in and evaluate inside your house or condo or wherever you live in now, but this is the door. This is a start and everything. The government should never be allowed to come into your house unless you're on fire or there's a fire or something like that. This is, this is a start of bad business, but that's the way we're going.
Thank you, thank you, Tom. Sir?
Peter Tarrano, 800 B Street. I would ask that the council consider providing an informational letter, because there's a lot of misconceptions about reassessments and evaluations. It's about equalization of taxes, and there are benefits to it, because if your values have increased in a municipality, it also increases your bonding capacities, your values within a municipality, and it have effect on your bond ratings. So there is an advantage to the municipality, and if you don't want to let somebody in your house, you don't have to. Usually, after a reassessment, if people refuse it, they see what their assessment is, then they're asking the Borough to come back in and do it. That's been my experience of a relatively new Delmar. I spent 12 years as an elected official in this state, and I underwent two reval and reassessments. My experience is most people are unfamiliar with it, they're afraid of something, and they listen to the rumor. So I'd ask you to please put out an informational document to everyone, tells you why you're doing it, how it's going to proceed, and there are advantages and disadvantages. And many of the tax reassessments or reevaluations, council, are usually based upon sales of properties within a given period based upon a percentage over the assessed value or below the assessed value. So if your property is over assessed now, this can be to your advantage. If it's under assessed, well, it's about fairness, and it has nothing to do directly with your taxes. It may change how Borough calculates its tax rate, am I correct? And then it equalizes out. And the general rule of thumb is sometimes one-third pay more, one-third pay less, and one-third stays safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Carl, you said you could appeal it, right?
Yes, the gentleman, everything that Mr. Tarrano just said is absolutely correct. Yes, you can certainly appeal those. Again, like I mentioned before, there's, you'll get a card in your assessment and a date and time to come to the Borough and review that and try to work out a number. And then also, once they go into effect for 2017, everybody has the right to appeal their taxes. Deadline is, I forgot, I think it's April 1 of each year. So for that year, you have to appeal by the deadline. You wait until like that each year, you can appeal your taxes. So if you get your reval and you don't like it, and if you don't appeal the following year, it starts all over again every calendar year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy Caputo, 1705 Serp Avenue. It's public information that we're having a revaluation, so, sorry, I'm always thinking of these things. Anybody can be walking around town, and whatever ID they have, I can make on my own computer in five minutes. So is there an independent way that we can verify who these people are? I'm wondering maybe if there's a certain number of people, can call in, post them on the website, I'll take my laptop over, I'll see that it's them. I'm a little uneasy with letting, you know, because people just be walking around.
Yeah, I understand your concern. We'll talk with the company and see if there's something we can set up in that region. You know, we certainly call Borough Wall for his question. You will see, though, just to give people a little bit of solace, you'll see, they usually come in groups, and it's not like you're going to get one person out of the blue, knock on your door. You'll see there'll be like three or four cars in the neighborhood, they'll be going to all the houses around you, and they kind of do like a block at a time. So, but still, even still, we'll talk to them, see if there's something we can set up on the Borough website, and I was, of course, called Borough Wall for his concern.
I appreciate that, but it still doesn't let me, when I look at that person, verify independently that that's who that is.
The proper identification.
They may have identification.
I could, whatever ID they're carrying, I could make on my computer, most of us could. So I'm just wondering if there's an independent way to verify, you know...
Well, maybe one possibility might be, if we know what their schedule is...
That would help.
Close the schedule.
And who it is, and...
Right, and that way you know, if they're going to be on your street that day, that time, then likely that that's what it is.
Or else I'm going to just, I'll wait and I'll just make an appointment maybe, and this way...
It, you know, it seems to me it's not dissimilar to, unfortunately, what we experienced after Sandy, when we had FEMA inspectors in town, and we were worried about fraudulent, and people trying to pretend they were FEMA inspectors. So what we tried to do was to communicate, we did, you know, code blue to certain areas in neighborhoods, and we knew the FEMA's inspectors were going to be hitting certain areas. So we can probably approach it a similar way and educate people about making sure you ask for credentials. So I'll work with, you know, the company that's ultimately awarded, and we'll find a way to best communicate to the...
I wonder if we could, if they go out in a group assigned a special to be in that area with them, that might, you know, so if you had any...
That would be nice.
If you go out and you see the special, call over, and our employee could verify.
And talk just like...
But there's always going to come down to an element of trust. You have to trust that.
You have people that check for you. No, they just go, yeah, I mean, we will, we will look at some options, we will absolutely communicate what the ID is, and if there is a way to verify who these people are.
Okay, thank you.
And Carl, also, if, I'm not sure if Carl said they were coming in individual cars, but if three or four people were to come in a company car, if it had the logo on the side, that would be helpful too, parked on the street, you could see that.
Is that like a secret password? Just kidding. We will, again, when we kick off with the new company, we will certainly have a protocol in place about credentialing and making everyone's comfortable.
Brennan?
Brennan Reed, 109th Avenue. How will this assessment program work with apartment buildings, example, tenants in apartment buildings, and people, they be, would the assessors get the permission, of course, of property orders, or would they have to require access to the individual tenant suites? I live in a large apartment building, which are the apartments.
Actually, I really don't really answer that question. I'm trying to work out what's been done in the past. They probably will need to look into the units individually, not just the apartment buildings as a whole, like, you know, going through the common areas, hallways, and then bodies, elevators and such. They probably will, 100% sure of it.
Okay, if you can find that out, and to the other gentleman's point, perhaps we should give that, there's also an information kit, also send out to the owners, and the owners themselves can also send to tenants when the program begins, that would be great.
Carl, they wouldn't need to see each apartment in an apartment building, because they're all valued the same. The condos would be different, I would believe.
That's why I'm hesitating to give definitive answers. I'm not sure. Again, I guess it depends on certain apartment buildings. Some of the older apartment homes, you may know, they'll have a common water heater that services the entire building, some have the individual, so some of the major, we consider major systems, hot water heaters, boilers for heat, air conditioning.
So it's probably nothing this company has not experienced before.
These guys have experienced everything inside those. So I guess it depends on the individual apartment building, how it's set up with the major systems I just described. So maybe on a case-by-case basis, but we'll try to find maybe, so put on that information.
Yeah, like we have, like we have a central hot, you know, hot water heating system. We also have a backup generator outside those, those put in perfectly outside, I'm saying, so, you know, we have those kind of things in our building. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. You're welcome, sir.
Okay, seeing no more hands, I make a motion to close the public session. Do I have a second?
I'll circle.
Aye. And then I make a motion to approve today's resolution on the revaluation.
There's two questions.
There's two.
The first one is actually, we added this, since we had the opportunity, especially to extend the grace period for third quarter property taxes, bills were issued this past week, so we were extending to August thirty first.
Okay. We have that, a motion for that one also, or?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the, to vote on the resolution awarding contract for the revaluation services?
Now we do real big first comment.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There's a second, a second. Okay. Council of Brennan?
Yes.
Council of Nickle?
Yes.
Council of Deppen?
Yes.
Before I vote, I'm happy to see that people came and gave us some suggestions, not all the time do we think about people coming into, I'm, I'm a woman also, and I should have thought about people, strangers coming into the house, you gave us good suggestions, and we'll certainly talk about it and try to keep this as safe as possible, yes.
And do the other resolution, correct? I make a motion to approve the resolution by the mayor and council authorizing the tax collector to extend the grace period for third quarter property taxes. Do I have a second?
I'll circle that.
Council of Brennan?
Yes.
Council of Nickle?
Yes.
Council of Deppen?
Yes.
Council of Fieldtuck?
Yes.
Okay. Now, to the public session. Anyone coming up, you raise your hand, give your name, give you five minutes, again, we'll answer you if we can, but we won't get into a debate back and forth.
And you got to hear it. Maria Florio, Fifteen Twelve Avenue. One question, where is our mayor?
I, I guess he's at work today, it is a Friday morning, and this is his call, and he probably couldn't get off, his boss probably-
And why was the meeting, you know, Tuesday night then, why did we not have that meeting?
I believe we had to give a certain amount of time notice to the newspapers and whatnot, and Tuesday, a Tuesday meeting would not have been enough time.
Yep. I do like you, Brian, but I didn't vote for you. I voted for him, and that's what I wanted to say.
You did, yeah!
I'm sorry, but how many meetings have we haven't had him here? The last meeting, he was here for the policemen to have their promotion, and then he left without even saying where he was going, because I wouldn't follow him.
No offense taken.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
But I, I think Jen did vote for him.
Yeah.
Uh, Tom?
If I can beat this dead horse. One of the worst phrases in this, in this world is, we're from the government and we're here to help you. Ronald Reagan, if you might remember. I will direct my wife to not let anybody in the house if I'm not there. This is total malarkey. We shouldn't have put it down just for that, just for that reason. Of course, it was a stage event and you were going to vote yes, so we already know that, but I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Sandy Caputo, Seventeen Zero Five Surf Avenue. Sorry to do this again, safety on the beach, footballs, frisbees, soccer balls, bats, rackets, you name it, all the time, it's getting worse. Should not be my responsibility to watch out for these things, it should not be my responsibility to watch out that a two-hundred-pound guy looking in the sky running doesn't run over my grandchildren. It should be the responsibility of the town to make the beach safe. And Brian, you were a lifeguard, right?
Correct.
Back then, you have to remember, forty years ago, I was on this beach, you saw that-
David and me.
You're, you're younger than me, but I know you were a lifeguard, and I remember back then, we had the property here, and lifeguards saw that football come out, you were done.
Yeah.
If you can even coerce the lifeguard now, and this is, no, we have great lifeguards, they just don't know. If you can even coerce them to stop the football, it's not like other things, they blow the whistle. They have to come down, come over, and apologize to the people why they're stopping the football. It's, and it's getting worse, it's getting worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
I went to Avon, and they have a list of rules and regulations on the beach, before you even go on the beach, it's all in black and white, and Belmar should do the same.
I, I know we used to have that sign up there, but-
This is a list of twenty different things, and people have agreed to, to be the rules of the beach, and it's written on every gate, so you should investigate that.
Thank you.
How do you stand? Done?
Yes.
Just following up with having someone who's on the beach to help manage the situation, not only the lifeguards, but at nine o'clock, nine-thirty, you see the police making sure people have their badges or whatever that they paid to come in eight o'clock and didn't get appropriate permission. Why not have them, since they're walking up and down on the boardwalk and sidewalks, why not include patrolling the beach as part of their responsibility? Because certainly the lifeguards have responsibility, keep their eyes out in teams, but we have these other people who are watching out for problems, and certainly, safety is a big issue on the beach, but they're marked.
Um, Carl, do we have people designated as beach police? I know we used to, and that's strictly what they do, they don't, you know, they just walk along the beach, they come back and they go up as a-
Well, they're thinking of a variety of safety issues down there, as well as enforcement-
The specials will be trying to pass the football.
Yeah. So they are responsible for a variety of enforcement issues, so I'll have a conversation again.
I think it's a matter perhaps of enforcement, frequency and enforcement.
Well, yeah, in other words, the lifeguards do not have police powers, I don't believe, you know, people will generally listen to what the lifeguards have to say, but when I, as Sandy mentioned, when I worked on the beach, if people gave us a problem, we would radio for the beach police, and if we couldn't, then a patrol car might come down or something like that, or one of the specials walking on the boardwalk, but, and then they'd be issued a summons for throwing the football for not stopping or something like that.
Yeah, I think we need to be a little less concerned about our weekly visitors coming back, and we're concerned about having a quality beach where people choose to come for a safe, pleasant day.
I'm, I'm sure, even Avon with the rules listed, people don't read those rules, and they go on the beach and they violate the rules that they just walked past, I mean, every, every beach, as much as this difference is saying.
Perhaps not, but we need to set a standard, we have to set standards in general.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I'm not making excuses, and I'm not denying what you see, but Brian made a good point last evening, that the lifeguards are obviously very concerned about using water, safety of everybody there, and two weekends ago, I noticed the lifeguards blew the whistle as quickly on somebody with a boogie board, they shouldn't have had the water, as they did with football throwing. However, behind them, they certainly were not looking around to see who was playing ball from here back, so, you know, I was very impressed that this was their area and that's what they did, you know, there could be somebody back there, I went from them turning to look, my child was in the water, but again, not making excuses, it was just my observation.
Yes.
Are you? Aye. Seeing no other people for the public session, I make a motion to close the public portion. End adjournment. Second?
Aye.
Aye. Look, huh? Three watches.
They used to post the rules, that gives them a lot of keys for like, and they, not yet we-
Stage event, how'd it go? That's all that was.